...
The eight, several meetings have been called order. We give the place of state of the moon of silence and the nation of power to the election place.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, the college information. I'd like to cover here, first off, on the agenda tonight, there's two places for comments. One is the agenda item comments, I know that is not an agenda item comments. I have no application for the agenda items comments. Non-agenda would be at the very end of the meeting, so.
Mr. Dale?
Okay, we'll do the agenda. This time I will look into approval of the agenda, and remember when you approve the agenda, you are approving the agenda. So I'm looking for motion, if Iverson makes a motion to approve the agenda, I'll strike out his second step motion. All in favor of the agenda, approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we move into the non-agenda, to the agenda item comments, and since there are none, we will go directly into communications to the board from the director's booth.
Good afternoon to everyone, welcome to the Board of Education April meeting. It's good to see everyone. I have several comments this evening. First of all, I would like to recognize and congratulate all our assistant principals in our school district, as this is a celebration for Assistant Principal Week. So, we have some great assistant principals in our school district, and I'm most appreciative of them and the job they do every day. The second item on my list is our showcase of schools. We are about seventy-five percent through that. This has been a very good event for our school district and events for all of our schools. It's been very unique in how each one of our schools approached their showcase. And I would say, I would like to say, number one, thank you to our schools administrations and staff, as well as our communities for supporting these events in our schools. I have seen as many as, a range of as many as seven to eight hundred people at one of our schools. Last evening, one school had over four hundred, one had over seven hundred. Weeks prior, we have had a multitude of parents and families who have taken advantage of these events, and I'm most appreciative of our staff for wanting to be engaged in these events. The work behind the scenes that go into these events have been incredible. From the featured artwork of our students to their own personal work. And Wax Museum, just a multitude, choral concerts, band concerts, exhibitions of CTE work, even a cornhole tournament last night. So, lots of favorite events, and I saw lots of, I've seen lots of smiling faces at these events. So, again, I applaud the efforts of our staff for making this happen in our school district. Many thanks to them. Number three on my list is our TCAP and EOC testing is upon us. And that will begin Monday, April the eighteenth. We received all our testing booklets today, for those that are taking tests on paper. Of course, our EOCs are online, so we look forward to that. And I know our students will give their all as we move into the, our testing, our state testing season. Good Friday will be recognized and celebrated, April fifteenth, and we will be out of school that day. Schools will be closed. Just as a follow-up to a couple of our schools today that were closed, we had a water line break at East High School. That water line break has been repaired. Our maintenance crews worked very diligently last evening, to the point where they could no longer work once the rain came and the lightning. So certainly, we want them to be safe. We pulled them out of the job, off the job, which meant we could not have school at East High School today. I got several emails from all the students at East High School that were just very upset over that. We also had a power outage in the community which Central Heights serves. And that was, that happened about five o'clock this morning. And we didn't have a good indication from AEP as to when that power would be restored. So again, school closed there. Unique day for us to have two schools closed. Both are scheduled to reopen tomorrow. Next on my list is what I always term as my favorite part of the board meeting, is when we have student recognition. So, I would like to invite Dr. Palmer to front and center. And Dr. Palmer is going to spend a little bit of time talking and introducing some of our students who just attended the SCOPE conference. And SCOPE is an acronym for Student Congress on Policies in Education. And each year, we are very happy to choose two juniors from each one of our high schools. So we sent two juniors from East High School and two juniors from Westridge High School to attend the conference. And Dr. Palmer is always very eager to take these students as their chaperone, and I think he has probably more fun than they do, but, Dr. Palmer?
Thank you, Ms. Rafalaski, appreciate it. Thank you for this time, and we're to recognize some really outstanding students that we have. And they will come to join me. I'm going to introduce to you Ms. Jenna Hare, Carson Latham, Parker Lemming, I don't believe is able to be here today. He's actually participating in a men's volleyball, volleyball tournament this afternoon. And then, of course, we have Rachel Niebrigen. Did I get it right? I practiced it and everything, and I got it right. So I'm so happy. So can you go over here, is there a way to see her? Yeah. Folks, these are some of the most brilliant students we have in Sullivan County. I don't know how in the world that we are so blessed to have such wonderful young people in our schools. And it was a real honor and a pleasure, and I agree. It was a real honor and a pleasure to, to work with these students and to travel with them and take them to this conference. I do want to tell you a little bit about the conference in addition, which Rafalaski has shared with you already. This is something that states put together to discuss current topics in education. Participants will explore education issues through mock school, or mock, yeah, mock school board meetings and group discussion. So they learn a little bit about what it's like to be these good folks behind this big desk over here. And these events are designed to give students an understanding of how school boards operate. Students will express their opinions by voting on opposition statements involving debated issues. And then finally, they will get a chance to elect SCOPE officers for the very next year. This year's debate topics, none of which are being discussed here, okay? But one of them, or off board, I'll tell you what they are. The school calendar shall be changed to a year-round schedule, was one of the debate topics. Two, students shall only be permitted to park on school property if they meet certain criteria. Number three, uniforms shall be worn by all students. And then number four, no students shall be permitted to leave campus during the lunch period. And what was unique about these, these experiences is that they don't get to choose how, which side of each of those topics that they side with. They're, they're, they're put into a pro and con of each of these issues. And so they're really kind of forced to see opposing points of view, which is a real stretch for high school students to, to make themselves see different sides of the issue and put themselves in other folks' shoes. So it's a very, a very unique learning opportunity, and that's why it supports sends such strong students to these events, to bring back what they've learned and, and to continue to grow and flourish and add to the education environment we already have. So, once again, thank you to each of you, and I wanted to ask you to share with us a little bit of something from the events. Mr. Carson, I'll start with you, is that okay? Have you a jump spot first?
Yeah, I'll give it that.
All right, good for you.
Really, we just got to learn a lot and like, get to experience like a mock school board, which was really cool, because really, I hadn't really ever been to like a school board meeting. So I really got to experience like all the stuff that you guys go through on a day-to-day basis. And I thought that was just really interesting.
Carson, great.
I thought it was interesting to have to argue a side that you might not agree with. It was a really good experience to get to see both sides of an argument. And it was a really fun trip. We got to go to an escape room the night we went down there, and it was good to bond with people that I didn't have before.
That was really good. And Ms. Jen, of course.
The thing I found most interesting was getting to be around students who went to schools that were much larger than mine and much smaller, and seeing how certain policies in their counties, it actually made me really thankful to be in the county that I am in. And I was just really thankful to be chosen for this, and I was very thankful for the opportunity.
Well, our administrators chose very wisely to send you all. And I will tell you, I've been to this thing now several years, our students really shine, and I was very proud of them. So, thank you for doing such a good job, and if we can give them a hand, I'd really appreciate it. Rafalaski has something for you, Wes.
I do, I have their certificates that have been sent to us by the Tennessee School Board Association that I want to give to you all. But I think, you know, there's a couple of things that I really enjoy when we bring students in from different schools that they maybe haven't made acquaintances before, but it always comes to the top that you form relationships and you become friends. So I really like that you pointed that out. I would ask, did any of you, by being on a different, having a different, being forced to take a different viewpoint, change your mind? Jenna?
I personally didn't. The ones that I'd be, I would have to be for not being able to park on school property unless you meet a certain criteria. And going into that, I was against it. And I think even after I saw everybody's opinions on being forward, I was still kind of against it. But I was able to see the other side of it, and it did make me be more open to it, so.
Made you think?
Yes, ma'am. Rachel?
I ended up on the same side that I agreed with. I had the one about uniforms, and I was on the side that we don't want to wear uniforms.
I was on the same side as Rachel, and I felt the same way as her, so.
All right, well, very good. I'm going to give you your certificate, and congratulations, and thank you for representing our school district, your school and yourself, in, in the positive manner in which you did, and I'm so glad that you had a good time.
Parents, go to pictures. Yes, please. Okay.
You want to talk about basketball?
Thank you.
All right.
We miss Parker tonight, but I understand he, he is on our, we have a men's volleyball team going on, and one of our first. So I understand that, we miss him, but we know he was a huge addition to it. Thank you, parents, for allowing your children to attend and represent our school district. So thank you to you as well.
Proud of you guys.
Mr. Jones, that concludes my comments.
The items on new business is the next item on the agenda, as I reported in the work session that we had at four thirty. Simply ask the board members to be thinking about the next move on the, on the facilities that we have that are not currently being used, that being Blumville School, Blumville Elementary School, and Sullivan Gardens, as well as Plum Hill Heights. We need to be thinking about those properties and look at making some decisions here in the very near future about who will harbor disposition of those properties. With that, we move into new business.
New business, item seven A is policy six point two zero six, transfers within the system. This was discussed in our work session. I do recommend that we accept this policy and recommending that on first reading, so I'm asking for waiver of rules.
Entertained motion to waiver of rules to begin with. Motion to be denied, that's second. Second for Mr. Hughes. All those in favor, please say aye, obviously, aye.
Aye.
Now, we will entertain a motion to pass this policy.
I make that motion?
Dr. Ralph makes a motion to adopt this new policy. Dr. Ralph makes a motion to adopt this new policy or revision of policy 6.206. You have a second. My second, Mr. Chairman. I'll second by Mr. Hughes. I'll do a roll call on this, Miss King.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ralph?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Item 7B on, on new business is teacher tenure approval. This evening, we have several teachers who have applied and qualified for tenure in our school district. So I would ask that as I call your name, that you join me up front. And I'd like to present you with a certificate. But first, I would ask that the board take the action on approving teacher tenure.
I'll entertain a motion to approve those teachers that have taken a tenure that's under risk. Mr. Price made the motion, Mr. Iverson second, roll call, Miss King.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ralph?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Congratulations to the following teachers, if you'll join me up front. Mr. Nick Ralph. Ms. Jennifer Green. Ms. Amy French. Kelly, okay. Julie Miller. Ty Boomer shot. Mandy Anderson. Kayla Towley. Sarah Arnold. Is Heather Levens here? And also is, I think Ms. Jackie Laird had, she also coaches for us, and they had a tennis match this evening. So those two and the array here in front of you are our tenured teachers for 2022. So congratulations to each one of you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on Lisa Blumhardt, who goes into hanging in here, just been involved for some number of years, all this year. Oops, they have to go through and jump through the recent status tonight. Again, congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is item 7C, school fees for 22, 2022, 2023. I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of approval of school fees, and these fees, if you were in the work session, have not changed in the last few years, so it's the same as last year. I entertain a motion. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hughes makes the motion, Mr. Iverson second, roll call, Miss King.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ralph?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item 7D is general purpose schools budget amendments. We have three. One is the account 72610, which is a matter of moving 41,000 from one item to another, to several. Item number two there is maintenance of plant budget, which is the movement of 12,000 from one line to another. And also item number three, which is the voluntary prepaid grant, which is moving 6269 from one line to another. I recommend approval.
You've heard, you've heard the recommendation of approval for this special amendment, general purpose. We heard the details of the discussion during the work session. Do you have a motion?
I make that motion.
Dr. Ralph makes the motions, I'll say it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Iverson. Any questions? If not, roll call, Miss King.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ralph?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Item 7E is Perkins budget amendment. It is a federal amendment. I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of approval on Perkins budget amendment. Mr. Price made the motion, I'll say it. Second, second by Ms. Hughes. Any questions and discussion? If not, roll call, Miss King.
Dr. Ralph?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, that concludes the agenda that I have for this evening.
Next on the agenda is public comments, non-agenda items, and I have seven who have registered for this. There's been some discussion in the community concerning the Innovation Academy. That's not on the agenda tonight. There is no motion, no recommendation being made on Innovation Academy, but it's some interest in the community. And I talked to the parents last night at the Central and Innovation Academy Open House, and there's seven people signed up tonight to speak to that. I'm not sure the order I have on them, but I'll just tell you the way that I have on them. Lucky number one, Sarah Grace Osborne. You have three minutes to speak, and there's no need to give your name and your address because we have that on the record, so just let it speak. And we'll be taking notice, thanks.
Hello, today I'm representing Sixth Grade Innovation Academy. Some people cannot be here tonight, and others do not want to speak in voice, but I will speak in my voice for them. Innovation Academy has welcomed us since we locked in the doors that day. We have been welcomed, loved by every single student and every single staff member in this welcoming. Every single student is like family to me, and so is my teacher. We are not a school, we are a thing, and we act as such. We have a different learning option within different schools, and that it should be cherished as well as others' learning options. We learn differently, but we do not learn alike. We learn through projects, we learn through communication, we learn through regular school, and we learn through writing, we learn through basically mainly steps in short time. And Innovation Academy students, we just learn differently as other people. We learn, we learn the same thing, we learn differently in other ways. In some ways, we learn through building, we learn through different ways, like we learn through online, we learn through paper, we learn through online and offline. It's just a different way of life.
I want to ask just one question. If you weren't going to Innovation Academy, which elementary, which middle school did you go to?
I would probably be going to Denver Great Sense.
Denver Great Sense. And I'm just asking that for information for the board. Thank you. Next on our list is Michaela Roberts. And Kayla, if you'll tell me which middle school you'd be going to also before you start.
Sullivan East Middle School.
Sullivan East Middle, okay. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Michaela Roberts. I'm a seventh grade student in my second year at Innovation Academy. I have heard that the school district is considering closing IA due to financial issues. I came this evening to discuss why I believe that closing IA would be the biggest mistake by the Sullivan County school system. First, IA provides a medium that promotes leadership and responsibility in students. This is one of many life skills that is enlisted in the student body. These skills do not appear as prominent in other schools within the county. Second, IA and student body collaborates with each other regardless of age or grade level. Doing so fosters the feeling of community, togetherness, and teamwork. Ultimately, ultimately, it removes lines of segregation and leads to acceptance in diverse practices, opinions, and cultures. Finally, IA consistently produces expi, expi, uh... Exceptional. Exceptional, there we go. Exceptional testing scores that are higher than any other school in the county, year after year. IA students are dedicated to their educa, to their education, and is proven by their excellence in academic testing scores. In conclusion, it is to, it is in the best interest of our community to provide the superior educational environment for the future leaders of America, of America in science, technology, engineering, and math. It is my sincere hope that I can continue to receive education and STEM next year at IA.
Thank you, Kayla. Next is Verona Mitchell. I get that first name correct. And you would tell me which, I guess there's two of us speaking, right?
Yeah, I was in Oakland.
Oakland and Verum. Which, which middle school would you be going to?
I'd probably be Sullivan Heights.
Actually, I can...
Sullivan Heights?
Yes.
Although some have previously talked about the closure of IA and how this is mainly cause of the decreased enrollment and financial problems, this would be a great mistake.
For starters, our school is made up of divided students around the county, looking for more challenging courses to study. Nevertheless, our test scores show that even with push, we can still achieve greatness.
When scoring T caps, schools are measured in their success rate, or the amount of students that scored a three or four. In 2018, our school performed 22.1% above the average in middle school in Sullivan County. And even after both the 19 came into effect, we still managed to score 18 or 25% of the standard in 2021.
In every single scoring, IA tripped over every other school. For instance, we had 77.8% success rate in social studies during the 2021 T caps, whereas the average was 38.62%.
Another big factor when it comes to testing is the average with and without IA. It is important to keep in mind that all previously stated data was comparing IA to the average, of which still included IA's test scores. Generally, there was a 5.4% decrease when Innovation Academy was not included.
Even so, test scores aren't the only thing that makes IA stand out, but the student's determination is of no other.
I sent out a survey to all 76 students currently at IA, and in the mere span of three days, three-fourths of the student body had responded.
Forty-four percent of those taking it knew fifth graders that wanted to join IA next year. Actually, around 50 fifth graders would be interested. Similarly, if 45.6% students need the middle schoolers, that would enroll in IA if the chance presented itself. Also, many students in lower grade levels hoped that they would go to IA as middle school.
Another key point to IA is how closely those are stated, oh, those associated with it are. We are known to be like one huge family, as previously stated, made up of people that can choose to, that choose to come here, not forced to go here. Whether it is because they didn't feel a sense of belonging in other schools, or they wanted a new way of teaching, almost if not all of our students, parents, and teachers would be more than willing to stick up for IA and continue on our path of family, tie bonds, and greatness.
Thank you for your time, and we hope that you will take our thoughts into consideration when determining the future of Innovation Academy.
I hope you're ready.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Phil Moore. I'm confused on the first name, so...
I already went.
I forgot your name or my name is, but next is Jerry Mitchell.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak to you about Innovation Academy today. I have three girls, Kate, who has already went through IA, she's a freshman at West Ridge right now, Verona, who's currently in IA, who just moved, and Reagan, who's in third grade at Ketchikan Elementary. As a parent, I want to provide my daughters with opportunities. I want them to have the possibilities of doing what they want to do in life. I think what separates Sullivan County schools from other schools is that Sullivan County gives the students an opportunity to experience school in a different perspective, like I do. They are group-oriented and technical-oriented. I know when I hear my girls talked or talked in the past about their projects, I can relate to, to their schooling because I do similar things in my job. They learn how to analyze data and how to work with people to, to finish a job at a specific deadline. In my life, I have noticed that looking at things with a different perspective helps to find creative solutions to challenges. I appreciate that you all are investing, and not only in my children's future, our community's future as well, with providing as much opportunities to learn as, as much as possible increases success with our children, which will translate into our community, in our nation, and in the world. Thank you for your time, and, and please continue to like the IA. Thank you.
You said you had a student who's at West Ridge and went to IA?
Yes.
And one currently at IA, and one in third grade at Ketchikan.
That's good.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Rodney Bage. Rodney Doctor.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Rodney Bage. I'm 1125, I've got my children, so I guess that's you.
I got it.
Couple things that I would want to point out, I guess, before I get talking about IA is, one is, I want to thank the board, Director Rafalaski, for opening up our schools, letting us, letting us see what it's about. As far as Innovation Academy goes, my son Avery went through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade there. I have a son Nicholas, who's in sixth grade at Central. I did not let him in IA. We discussed it over and over again. Some kids do better with traditional learning, and some kids are hands-on. My older son was very hands-on. So I think IA was great for him. That being said, I would stand up for IA any day of the week. I believe in the school, I believe in the concept, I believe in that there is a group of kids out there that benefit greatly from it and the way things are taught there. I sent all of you an email yesterday with some charts and stuff that I had made up that showed some of the achievement scores and success rates for Innovation Academy, including having it broken down into subject and ranked against other county schools that were in existence during that time. As some of the students that have come up here have talked, in numbers-wise, IA was on the top of the county list. IA was also actually very competitive with some of the city schools and with both Bristol and Kingsport. I think John Severe was the only one that consistently beat us out. So, and I say that because I had a kid go through there, I'm sorry. I still consider it part of us. But I would ask that you look at those. You are right, I have not heard that the, that the closure has been a recommendation that's been made yet. I think the reason that I'm here and many of these people are here is because of concerns that there has not been recruitment and shadowing and marketing allowed out there for Innovation Academy to replenish the enrollment. Enrollment is down, as I've stated in my email. We've had about four years of, you know, fit my car, so to speak. I mean... I mean, IA has been hit by things it has no control over. In 2018, there was, you know, there was funding discrepancy where some renovation funds were taken out of our budget and it was put up as an auction to be closed along with a couple of other schools. We came up here, it got worked out to where it wasn't closed, but that did hinder recruitment because all that came up a couple of days before our open house. In 2019, there was, you know, there was some funding concerns. Again, with the county commission, where there was attempts to cut us in July and October of that year. And so that made it a little bit shaky. And then COVID, schools closed just before IA would have done its recruitment and shadowing season. And then last year, recruitment was hindered again because some of the elementary schools were quarantined during that time period. So we'd had about four years before we had not had honest representation of what IA can do from an enrollment and recruitment standpoint. I put out some Facebook stuff yesterday to talk to parents. I had at least nine people contact me, some students NIA, some students that were wanting to go to IA. I had a student that was in sixth grade at Central that was interested in going in in seventh grade next year. I had someone from Washington County that had two fourth graders that were wanting to come in. They had the current sixth grader, but they had the two fourth graders that they were looking at as well down the road. I had a lady contact me about having a seventh grader that would only be at Sullivan Heights, but said that if IA closed, they would probably look at Kingsport or trying to do something along with university school. I had a lady with a seventh grader that, you know, basically just gave me the plus that they liked the smaller school atmosphere from it, and their student adapted well to that. I had one, they contacted me, they had an eighth grader at IA that said that it worked great for their eighth grader. Had one, they had a fifth grader at Emmett that was interested for the fall. Had one that contacted me and said, "I can't really help you right now, but I've got a third grader and a fourth grader." That was our plan, was to apply for IA. I have two from the north area that are at IA now that also indicated that they would probably look outside the district if it closes. I think there is a demand out there. I just think that we need to give it an honest attempt to recoup from this, you know, it's kind of like the equivalent of me working on a dog that's got hit by a car. IA has been hit by a car between funding issues and COVID. It's got a broken leg. We can either try to plate it or we can amputate it. We really hope that we can try to go and plate it instead of amputating it. My request to you, I'm going to kind of go outside the bounds here a little bit, is if the recommendation comes up, you have this information now, you have your testing set. You guys will get the money part of that. I don't know all that. I know that we have 10 or 12 kids that are out of districts, so I know that helps offset the cost a little bit. But you see that there's kids here, there's parents here. There's a willingness for these people to do what is best for their kids. If they feel like that's going out of district, they'll do that. If they feel like that's going to IA, they'll go the extra step and apply for IA. If they feel like they stay in the county school, they'll stay in the county school. But these guys have a willingness to do what they feel is needed. IA serves kids that do well in hands-on learning, but it also serves gifted kids. It serves kids with Asperger's that are on the spectrum. It serves kids that have ADHD. There's a lot of, a lot of different ways in which it has helped kids in our district and outside of our district over the past several years. So I would just ask that when all the money stuff comes in here, that you understand, in my opinion, a dollar spent on IA gives you a value that's more than that dollar. And hopefully you take that into consideration whenever the time comes, if that recommendation is made. Again, I would just beg that you reconsider, and if you do reconsider, I would ask that you open up some recruitment, marketing, shadowing, get things rolling so that we can get this rebounded and maybe even go so far as to make a commitment. If you do not vote to close it, make a commitment, a three-year commitment, something like that, that says, "We're going to allow this a chance, and we're going to market it, and we're going to put it out there, and we're going to put the teachers in that need to be there and see where it goes." And you know, if three years, if they can't cut it, if we can't get to enrollment where it is to be, I mean, I understand. But I feel like that we've had about three or four years where it's not really had a chance, and I think it deserves a chance. It's the best we've got in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Mitchell.
Yeah, I'm lower than my eight, so I'm so short.
And you would get someone high, too?
Um, I would have, okay, so I am a Westridge student.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
You're the oldest woman.
Yeah, I'm the oldest. I'm her sister and his daughter. So, um, okay. So, Ms. Raffelowski and school board members, thank you for hearing me speak. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the time you are spending to hear all of us out. I think that is very important, and I really do appreciate it. So, um, okay. So I went to IA for the duration in middle school, all three years. And whenever I first made it to sixth grade, I was scared and I was afraid that, you know, I wouldn't fit in or it would be too advanced for me. But whenever I made it there, you know, I didn't know anything about electronics either, but whenever I made it there, I realized that the teachers were kind and the students kind of held the same kind of warmth and wished to be further up there, to hold a greater standard over theirselves for, um, for like different classes and academics. And so it made it a whole lot easier for me to feel welcomed, and I felt like, you know, it was just nicer and more comfortable. So in addition to this, I believe that IA has really helped me with the way that, like, the way you're kind of like supposed to live. And you're supposed to hold goals. They told us that from day one. And you hold goals, you hold more confidence in yourself. And that's how I'm able to speak to you guys today, because they taught us that presentations and teamwork are very important. And so I have learned that, you know, communication is also extremely important. During the COVID time, it was really hard for me. And I normally wouldn't open up, you know, to my parents about it, but after I've been through IA and they taught us about communication and how important it was, I was able to communicate with people outside the school, like my parents, and I could tell them what I was going through, and they could help me. And we could have a closer family, if that makes sense. So it really has helped me outside of the school. It's definitely helped me in high school. I'm a freshman and I'm, there's only like a month left, and that's crazy because it's gone by. You know, time flies by like that. It's like, whoa. But, um, but with, um, I just spaced out, sorry. So with the, um, but with freshmen, I took, um, I took some pre-AP classes. I took pre-AP English and I took, um, and I'm, I took pre-AP Algebra I and I'm taking pre-AP Algebra II. And so far, those classes have actually been pretty easy for me. I'm taking Biology I right now, but I figured out that it's a bit too easy for me. So I'm planning to take Biology II pre-AP next year. And so like I had said before, it helps me hold a bigger standard and a higher standard for myself to kind of go after higher stuff so I can help the economy and help my family and help the world better. And therefore, I believe that IA should be kept open because it really does help you with different stuff and it's not just something outside of school. It follows you through your whole life and, you know, like other people have added, it really, you know, there are, you know, higher standards. And yeah, thank you for listening. I appreciate it, and have a great Friday.
Thank you, Caitlin. I admire the students who stand up and speak of any age, especially in middle school or high school, just stand in front of a group and just like, yes, I'm like.
Excuse me, these folks didn't know they had to sign up to speak and they still wanted to speak on the subject.
Please speak tomorrow, Mr. David.
No, no, I just think that's happened to me, and she goes to my school.
I wrote a very quick statement, and I can read it really fast, but I'd like to-
Come round and up, and if you'll complete the form, so I had to, I read you that I had to come out and speak.
It was your name.
We'll ask for a phone number, Mr. David might write it down.
Thank you. Of course, I wrote this with my reading glasses on, and I didn't bring them. Would you like to form them? I think I'll be okay for a second. First and foremost, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to read my statement. If you aren't aware, April is the month of the military child. So I'd like to introduce you to my military child, Declan. In his military career as a child, he has moved to five different locations and he's attended seven different schools. So why is school number seven so valuable to us after going to all these other ones is a little bit mixed up in who Declan is. He's a highly intelligent, complicated-brained kid. His thought process doesn't always want to take the linear path. He can write complex code on a computer, all while listening to loud music, laughing with friends, and entertaining his sister. He can solve math problems that I would struggle to do on paper in his head. This program challenges him and it inspires him to see all of the amazing potential that he has within himself. The staff at Innovation Academy understands how best to guide hands-on learners like Declan, which is apparent in their test scores. I don't know what amazing career path Declan will choose to follow. All I know is that he will be better prepared to do it in large part due to the level of education he's receiving at Innovation Academy. If at the end of the day, the impact on students isn't enough to sway the board, please consider how closing Innovation Academy will negatively impact the county and state test scores and rankings. They're doing an amazing job. I've seen a lot of schools in these military moves, and I'm telling you, it is an amazing, amazing program, and these students will really reap the benefits, and the community will reap the benefits of who they've taught. So, thank you.
Just leave that with you before you leave. Bring it on up and give it to them in. You'll need to complete the form also.
Good evening. My name is David Sneddon. Thank you for allowing me to have time to talk tonight also. My wife's son and I knew here at Tennessee, and we reside in Johnson City. When we found out about the IA school, we were really excited, the STEM program. I'm here tonight to really talk about the budgets, more so than the STEM school director. So I wrote up this, and I'd like to share this with you guys. Budgets are set. They're set by people. Budgets must be prioritized. Here's an example. A family with children must prioritize between putting food on the table or buying that new bike or buying that skateboard. Although our budget may shrink or operating costs may become higher, you, we must always prioritize budgets. It's very, very important. Getting rid of IA is the same as reducing shopping for food at the grocery store and still buying that expensive bike or skateboard. Children must eat well and rest. This is what builds their ability to learn. If 18% of schools and or district budget covers sports to include uniforms, then you slightly cut the budget to purchase less expensive uniforms. But you don't ever cut budgets in areas of learning that will allow kids the opportunity to move forward to higher institutions of learning. You never, ever, ever take away that one thing that children benefit from most. It's the responsibility of everyone here, all of you, to do whatever it is that you need to do to find and obtain the funds to keep IA separate and apart as it currently is. We all know that integrating the STEM program with Sullivan Central will only hurt the kids at IA. History proves that. It's been done before many, many times. The ones that suffer the consequences of not doing what it is that you all need to do are the kids. If less and less families and or individuals decide over the next 10 years to not locate and live in Sullivan County, you will have a lesser quality of education for the children living here. You must be competitive with the quality of education and have options like IA so that people moving here can excel in education as other areas all over the country are. We all know that teacher-student ratio is very important to the quality of education our children receive. You never, no kidding, you never take away the very thing that is most important to the children. And for that matter, you don't take away what is most important and beneficial to anyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all the ones I have that have asked to speak. That concludes our agenda. Each board member has an opportunity to give an update. The only update that I have is that we have our most previous-
Is the form to the right? Did you get that? Yeah, yes.
Mr. Waiver, you're not doing your job down there.
I would like to speak, but it's okay. Do you have time? Hello, I'm Cynthia Robbins. It's real nice to see you.
And don't forget to your relatives, my free rate.
Apologies for not even letting them in. I have two students, seventh grade students who attend IA. I'm here tonight because the concerns was raised in the community about the potential budget problems occurring in Sullivan County at this time, which may hinder the future of IA. There was rumors of closure, or pending closure, or changes made within the system where IA may not, no longer exist. I'm here to tell you that that would be one of the greatest failures of Sullivan County. I have two girls who attend seventh grade at IA, one of which is an Asperger's child, which is on the autism spectrum. Fitting in in middle school is difficult enough when you're neurotypical. When you're not neurotypical, it is a great challenge. She has found her herd, and she will tell you. I have another student, recently diagnosed with ADHD, who's very bright. Both girls are very bright. I'm partial as a mom. But both of them have a thirst for knowledge, a thirst for learning and ambition. They want a future. Without the structure that they found in IA, their future may be changed or altered. They may have been led down a different path because they didn't fit in or because they weren't challenged enough in their education. Both of my children are involved in extracurricular activities which challenge them to learn more, do more, and be good citizens. IA fosters that. They foster that personal growth in each individual student. You will not find that in any other school in your system or most around our region or even across our nation. It is a unique school that can really reach some of these kids who are not neurotypical children and put them on a path of success, put them on a path of encouragement. You will not find it anywhere else. I can assure you that your money would be wasted going into standard programs and pushing these kids back out into a standard program. But as I, as a parent, would find it very challenging to allow that for my children because I feel like their growth would not be fostered as well, and I will proceed to do whatever is best in their education, as well as any other IA parent will tell you. We push our kids to do well. All of us as parents individually do that. However, IA fosters some of those unique features for our children. For the first time, one of my children has not come home and said, "I have been so bored today," or "That is so boring." They're talking about interesting projects. They're talking about team communication. They're talking about taking what is a standard and putting it into a project learning base using STEM education and coming up with a product at the end of the day. You do that every single day, regardless of what your career is. Every single day, regardless, everything in the future is going to be STEM-based. Technology is advancing far faster than we could ever educate our children to be. But these kids are bright. They figure it out. Engineering is used in just about any industry that you would choose as a career path. Engineering is used in just about any industry that you would choose as a career path. Math is used on a daily basis by all of us to some degree. But they're able to solve problems, they're able to approach a problem, they're able to process it and come up with a plan to solve it. This is not the future of our children as far as STEM education goes. We have got to foster that growth in our community for, to have leadership for tomorrow. We have children who can't speak in front of other people, who are now giving up and presenting the information that they have researched, that they have pulled together and come up with a project that displays the knowledge that they have learned. You cannot compare it anywhere else. So it's my hope to you that even though the bottom line comes down to dollars, as it most times does in any education system today, as federal governments continue to cut education and state governments are challenged to find funding a lot of times for education, I'm here to tell you that this is the standout school of Sullivan County. It is unique to our area, and it is a treasure to behold. So I am hopeful, as you approach your budget, that you think about the investment you're making in these children's future and the children behind them, that are bright children that need that challenge. The children who find their herd, that is what you need. So I appreciate your time, I appreciate you listening to me. Sorry I'm a little nervous speaking in front of people, but, you know, when you have children that have different needs, that learn different ways, this school fosters those different learning abilities, and it helps these children grow into what they can be in the future. So it is my sincerest hope, as you all approach the budget, that you take that into consideration into the future, and I look forward to the next year at I A, and hopefully many more for students behind them that are planning on attending. Thank you.
And your students will be attending Sullivan Heights, is that great?
Uh, yes, they're originally slated for North, then they're slated to go to Sullivan Heights, yes.
Thank you. Make sure you get... I guess that concludes our, of the comments and run of the agenda. Our next board meeting will be on May the twelfth, four o'clock, session four thirty, regular meeting at six thirty. We do have a board retreat on Monday. This coming Monday, it will be eleven, five to nine or later, whatever it takes, as we prepare some of the data. This time I'll go into the board comments, I'll start with Mr. Robertson, and no politics.
No politics. First off, I'd like to just say, I applaud all of the students, especially guys, it's difficult, it's challenging. Looking at a bunch of people that are staring back at you as you talk, it's not fun at all, but you guys did great, I'm really proud of all of you. The parents as well, because even that, it's not easy, you know, we're talking to people that just sort of stare at you. But thank you guys all for coming, thank you all for speaking. Over the past few days, I got to go to Sullivan Heights Middle School and Rock Springs Elementary School, and it was great. You could see the excitement, everybody was really happy, we finally got them back in the schools, with the first tours going on, basically. It was fantastic to see that. What those teachers and, you know, the administrators did was just amazing. I mean, the artwork that was up and all the things that were there, they were excited about their schools, they were excited about the activities, and it was just wonderful. It was great to be a part of. The teachers were all excited, and that really filtered out, because the students are just having a great time. So just want to say thank you to all of those that put in the extra effort, because they were all there on their own time, so it was fantastic seeing everybody. But that's really it, just, great job.
Dr. Price?
I just want to say, teachers, you've prepared the students well for the upcoming test. I know they're going to do great. That's really all I've got to say. Good luck.
Ms. Q. I don't think there's a chairman. Ms. Robertson?
I guess as we'll say, I'm proud of the students for stepping up, so quite a few of them there, I've seen over a limited amount of time, too, for our agents. So I guess probably what I got, Happy Easter. Enjoy Easter weekend next week, spend it with the family. Hope somebody...
I'll echo Mr. Irson, and thank you to the parents, but really, the students, you all did a great job. You conveyed the information better than a lot of people that are elected to local office in this county. And I'm being serious, so definitely learned something, and what I liked to hear most was about teamwork and caring about the community. I think that's what we all need to focus on. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Just to add to what Mr. Bobby said, personally, thank you all for coming and letting us know what your opinions are. It's hard for us a lot of times to know what the community thinks if they don't come and communicate with us. So thank you, kids, parents, for taking the initiative to be here. I mean, I don't like to speak in front of people, but thanks for doing it, we appreciate it. And I wish Robertson said, have you, Happy Easter, and see you next time.
Thanks for all those that have come tonight, and those visiting at home, I assume we'll get a broadcast. This meeting is...